The 917 number that's unmuting is Sam Rockwell, so don't keep muting that one.
The broadcast-
We can get- Sorry, go ahead, Gaby.
The broadcast of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission will now begin.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us. I'll call it to order. 2020 Planning Commission hearing. My name is Sam Rockwell, Service President of the Commission, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Caprini? Dunick?
Here.
Ismiley?
Here.
Lipkeep here?
Here.
Marwa? Meyer? Olson?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Okay, there are five commissioners and Rockwell present.
All right, we have quorum. Before proceeding on to some of our other items here, I did want to just acknowledge- I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Our first hearing since the George Floyd murder in Minneapolis, and, you know, because of open meeting laws, the commission's unable to come together to create shared statements. So I speak for myself and not for any of the other commissioners in saying that the events, starting with the murder of George Floyd, and the subsequent events in the city of Minneapolis have been heartbreaking and have been tough, and, of course, started with just a completely unacceptable circumstance. So, you know, first blush, we're kind of a technocratic body, the Planning Commission, that doesn't have a lot to do with the events of the last several weeks. But, you know, we represent the full city as we sit here, as does every other board and commission, and our work helps shape that city from day-to-day decisions to the policy work that we do. So, you know, just a moment of reflection that the built environment was kind of an actor and a symbol in a lot of the work of the last weeks and the events of the last weeks, and that the buildings shaped by this commission have been, you know, the subject of justified outrage and of some opportunistic looting, and that the rebuilding of these corridors and these buildings will all come through the commission. You know, I think a lot of our work is about rebuilding the city, really still clamoring back from the population loss that happened kind of after the 1950s, which, of course, was the result of white flight all across America, including in Minneapolis. And we spent a lot of time trying to reverse some of those trends from developing surface parking lots and trying to bring people to our streets rather than drive-throughs and strip malls, and bring people to the streets of downtown rather than separating folks by class and skyways and so forth. And we, of course, also spent a lot of time in the 2040 plan with extraordinary help from leadership, from staff, to address some of the more, some of the older land use discrimination elements, including the racial covenants and redlining, which got baked into our zoning codes. So, you know, there's a lot of systems of oppression, and the land use and zoning is one of them. And so it's not just the police that kind of enabled ultimately the murder of George Floyd. And for many, and I think appropriately, it's this broader set of discriminatory systems that brought everyone to the streets. So, you know, our land use system determines where we live and who gets to live where, whether our streets are welcoming, where harmful pollutants are spewed, how much climate pollution we put out to the air. And as I said, the 2040 plan really begins to address some of these decisions, or day-to-day decisions on this commission really have a lot to do with how people are able to grasp opportunity and whether or not we're discriminating as a city or not. I don't have particular words of wisdom at the end of this, but except to say that, you know, as we discover discrimination within the land use patterns and within our zoning codes, we will work as hard as we can to rectify those. And staff has done an extremely good job, and the councilors are an extremely good job at doing that. And it will stay committed to open dialogue, and it will stay resolute in this process. I welcome any other commissioners, if anybody wants to say anything else, because I did not, as I said, speak for the commission. Commissioner Lipkeep here.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as a resident of North Minneapolis, I hope that we can empower and represent all of our community voices, particularly the underserved ones in our community, as we reshape and rebuild this process going forward to make sure that we are staying true to what the community needs and wants and listening, most importantly, listening. Thank you.
Commissioner Ismiley.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for saying what you said, Sam. I just wanted to add a couple of things, and that is that I do hope that we take away something meaningful from all of this and actually try to implement equitable practices into how we conduct our business, but also moving forward if we come across any opportunities when we're doing policy reconsideration, or you mentioned all the restrictive covenants and things like that. So, and those are results of planning, and I think we are well situated to look at those and address those. So I hope that, moving forward, we more consciously integrate equitable practices into our day-to-day work.
Thank you, Commissioners Spear and Ismiley. If anybody else wants to speak, we can do it now, at the end of the meeting, or any other time at the beginning of any meeting. These are evergreen issues. With seeing no one else wishing to speak right now, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11, 2020 hearing. Commissioner Ismiley?
I move to approve the minutes of May 11, 2020.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Dunick?
Second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Let's see if we have Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Ismiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer? He's not here yet. Olson?
Aye.
And Schrader?
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right, that motion passes. Next up, we will organize the agenda. So first we have on consent, which we'll pass on consent, the Committee of the Whole, items from June 4th, two items there, both land sales under some redevelopment programs there. Next up, we have item number six, which is 1820 Gerard Avenue South in Ward 7. We will discuss item number six. Next, we have item number seven, which is at 2521 Bloomington Avenue in Ward 9. I am going to assume, unless staff indicate otherwise in the chat, that item number seven may be placed on consent. Very good. Next, we have item number eight, 2641 Fremont Avenue South in Ward 10. We'll place that item on consent unless, again, I see anybody say otherwise in the chat. Item number nine is Park Avenue Flats, 2806 and 2810 Park Avenue in Ward 6. Item number 10 is 501-517-529 Sixth Street South, 60610 and 618 Portland Avenue, 50512-528 Seventh Street South in Ward 7. We'll place item number 10 on consent. Item number 11 is 3601 Forty Fourth Street East in Ward 12. We will place item number 11 on consent. Item number 12 is HC2-3501-3525 Hennepon Avenue in Ward 10. We will discuss item number 12. Item number 13 is 35 Groveland Terrace in Ward 7. We'll place item number 13 on consent, and I see a note in the chat that item number 11 being pulled from consent will be placed on our discussion list.
Commissioner Rockwell, I don't know if you're working from the email I sent today. Item number 13 is being continued one cycle to the July 6th meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. No, I'm working off the agenda, but also looking back and forth through the chat. So it's a disaster of a distracted chair here. Very good. Thank you. Item number 14 is the Tory Lofts 909 to 913 West Broadway in Ward 5. And that item will be placed on consent. Item number 15, 3136 Minnehaha Avenue in Ward 9. We'll place on consent. Oh, sorry, we will discuss item number 15. Item number 16, Olson Housing at 461 Gerard Terrace in Ward 5. We'll place item number 16 on consent. Item number 17, 1127 Fourth Street Southeast and 411 12th Street Southeast in Ward 3. We'll place item number 17 on consent.
President Rockwell, if I could just note, item number 11 was also intended to be continued one cycle to the July 6th meeting. So not as discussion, but as a continuance.
Ah, we need to not discuss item 11, but continue item 11. All right. Very good. I'll put that off our discussion, put that in continuance. Thank you. Item number 18, 2911 Grand Street Northeast in Ward 1. We will place that on consent. Item number 19 is 1203 to 1221 Washington Avenue South and 253 12th Avenue South in Ward 3. We'll place item number 19 on consent. Item number 20 is the Capri Theater, 2027, 2029, and 2033 West Broadway, 2301 Oliver Avenue North, 2104 and 2106, 23rd Avenue North, and a portion of 2101 West Broadway in Ward 5. We will place item number 20 on consent. Item number 21 is Anishinaabe 31600 East Franklin Avenue in Ward 6. We'll place item number 21 on consent. Item number 22 is the Sabathany Community Center, 310 East 38th Street in Ward 8. We'll continue item number 22 to the July 6th meeting. And item number 23 is Simpson Housing, Community Shelter and Apartments 2734, 2740 First Avenue South in Ward 10. We'll place item number 23 on consent. And so we will- Our agenda as amended is items number 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 23 are on the consent agenda. And I'll note that item number 5 is our Committee of the Whole consent agenda from June 4th, 2020. Items number 6, 12, and 15 will be discussed and will continue. Items number 13 to July 6th, number 11 to July 6th, and number 22 to July 6th. I do not believe that item number 4 requires any action. That's just a LIMs formatting issue. Correct me if I'm wrong. All right.
Item number 4, so if we're working off the LIMs agenda, item number 4 is the COW items. The LIMs agenda is the agenda that we should be working off of for numbering, and that's how the public hearing items are lined up as well.
Item number 4 is our COW agenda. I'm looking at LIMs, and item number 5 is our COW agenda.
You are right. It was swapped earlier. So yes, item number 4 in LIMs is just the note. Item number 5 off this agenda is the Committee of the Whole report.
All right.
The other version of the agenda has those two flipped around.
All right. Who knew organizing an agenda could be such a trial? All right, so item number 4, so I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Commissioner Ismiley?
I move to approve the agenda as amended, and I'm not going to read through that motion. That's going to take a while.
And just one more interruption before we pass that motion. We have not asked if there are any callers on the line who would like to speak to any of the items that we have placed on the consent agenda when doing the sorting of the agenda.
True. I thought the only people who had the number to call in had to have gotten lined up through staff, which is why I asked staff to interrupt. Is that not-
I have 40 people signed up for tonight's meeting.
Okay, and we don't know who they're, but they're here. All right. So I'm sorry, I thought that everybody who signed up had to sign up with an item in mind. I apologize. I didn't-
They do, but applicants also sign up, and so it's hard to know if everyone signed up correctly without calling out to make sure that no one wanted to discuss one of the items on consent.
All right, very good, making those items, not consent items. So if anybody on the line is on the line to discuss anything other than items number 6, 12, and 15, which are 1820 Gerard Avenue South, HC2 at 3501 to 3525 Hennepon Avenue in Ward 10, and 3136 Minnehaha Avenue in Ward 9. If you wish to discuss something other than those three, please unmute yourself by hitting star 6 and indicate which item you are here to testify about. I will otherwise assume everyone on the line is here to discuss items number 6, 12, or 15 for the items on Gerard, Hennepon, and Minnehaha. We will discuss those three items. All right, I've heard no one to speak on anything other than items number 6, 12, and 15, so our signup system worked. And so I will accept that motion. Commissioner Olson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Clerk, please call a roll.
Caprini? No, Caprini? Dunick?
Aye.
Ismiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Schrader?
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right, that motion carries. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Dunick?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Commissioner Ismiley?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Clerk, please call a roll.
Caprini? Dunick?
Aye.
Oh, there's Caprini. Okay. Dunick?
Aye.
Ismiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Schrader?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Next, could I have a motion to continue items 11, 13, and 22 to the July 6th City Planning Commission hearing? Commissioner Olson?
So moved.
Commissioner Ismiley?
Second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
It makes me laugh when we have to do rolls so many times. Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Ismiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Schrader?
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right, that motion carries. We are on to our discussion agenda. Item number 6 is first up, 1820 Gerard Avenue South. Peter Crandall with staff. Peter, floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Crandall, Senior Planner with SEEPAD Land Use. The first project that we're considering tonight is located at 1820 Gerard Avenue South. The applicant is seeking a rezoning of the property from the R2 Residence District to the R3 Multiple Family Residence District. The site is currently occupied by a two-and-a-half-story residential building containing three dwelling units, two of which, I believe, are currently legally occupied under the R2 zoning. The site itself is 13,500 square feet in area, and the applicant is seeking a rezoning in order to add a fourth unit and to legally occupy four units within the existing structure. So they're not currently proposing any modifications to the building itself, but internal modifications that would allow for the establishment of four legal dwelling units in the parcel. We can go to the next slide. Can we advance to the next slide? So as far as the land use guidance for the site goes, the land use category is urban neighborhood, which is broadly applied to the interior of residential neighborhoods across the city and allows for a wide variety of land uses and intensities. And then the built form district is the interior 2 district, which is largely applied to neighborhood interiors that are somewhat closer to the downtown core than the outer neighborhoods of the city. Built form guidance for the interior 2 district is for smaller-scale residential buildings. Individual residence lots are permitted to have up to three dwelling units, and multifamily buildings with more than three units are permitted on larger lots. They, it also states that residential buildings should be between 1 and 2.5 stories in height. Go to the next slide. And I'll just state that, as far as the built form goes, the R3 district does have a 2.5-story height limit. Sorry, let's go back one to the zoning map. So it's the larger lots provision in the policy guidance that allows for us to recommend approval of an R3 zoning category for this parcel. 1820 Gerard is, as I stated earlier, 13,500 square feet in area. In general, typical residential lots in Minneapolis are usually between 4,000 and 6,000. I did calculate the average parcel size for this block and the surrounding eight blocks. Just for some context, average parcel size in the R2 is sometimes a little bit larger. And for this particular area, the average parcel size is about 8,000 square feet. Next slide. This is an image of the structure itself. Again, applicant's not proposing any modifications to the exterior of the structure. All modifications to establish the four dwelling units would be interior. So I will conclude my presentation there. I know the applicant is present and on the line.
Peter, a quick question from a commissioner before we head to the applicant. Commissioner Lipkeep here.
Yeah, Peter, I just had a question. In reading through the correspondence we got from people writing in, is this the only zoning classification for four units? The question was raised, and I'm just curious about your staff perspective on that.
Yes, a rezoning to R3 is the only legal path forward to establishing four units within the existing structure.
Thank you.
All right, if we could have the applicant unmute, please, and introduce yourself and add any further context. Unmute yourself by hitting star 6.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Michael Appleman. I'm here with my wife, Michelle Micky Appleman, and we are the owners of 1820 Gerard Avenue South. We purchased this building approximately four or five months ago. And as you saw, it's a beautiful building, architecturally built by the Muncy Moore family, as I understand, for his daughter. As indicated, it's 10,600 square feet of finished space on a 13,000-square-foot lot. Currently, there are only two full-time residents, although there are 13 bedrooms and seven bathrooms. Some of the other residents are gone two-thirds of the time or a third of the time. So we have a very quiet building in a very beautiful neighborhood of professionals that I've met, wonderful people that live across and so forth, that I've discussed the zoning change with. And they've seen the improvements that we've made in the property. It was quite dilapidated when we purchased it, and we've improved it significantly, primarily through interior cosmetics and new cabinets and the like. It has a four-car garage, so at most, there's only a need for two off-street parking spots. The fourth unit would be a one-bedroom unit with over 3,000 square feet. And after talking to the neighbors, Karen Berklin and Jeff Emerson, Dr. Jeff Emerson- And after talking to the neighbors, Karen Berklin and Jeff Emerson, Dr. Jeff Emerson, who represents many of the other neighbors, their main concern is not the fourth unit, but that we would ultimately have the option of building, well, we do have the option of building a nine-unit, but what I can say, representing my wife and myself, we have zero no plans to convert it other than to a fourplex. We believe that we've done a beautiful job of increasing the value of the property, and it's consistent with the 2040 plan of creating a diverse housing choice within an existing structure. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none, I see that we have Jeffrey Emerson on the lines. Please press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jeff Emerson, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to the Commissioners. I live at 1901 Humboldt Avenue South, diagonally across Lincoln Avenue from the applicant's property, and I believe I speak for the neighbors in opposing the rezoning of this property to R3. This rezoning is inconsistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which speaks specifically to the low-density area in which the property sits. I believe you've received several letters from the neighbors opposing the rezoning largely for this reason. I'd like to draw your attention to the June 12th memo from Eleanor Rosenstein that outlines the legal basis for denying the rezoning application, and specifically, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan designations for this property are urban neighborhood and interior 2, which together allow for multifamily housing with up to four units allowed for large lots. Rezoning to R3 would allow multifamily housing at one unit per 1,500 square feet of up to nine units for this particular property, and this is totally inconsistent with this section of Lowry Hill and with the existing law as described in that June 12th memo. Hopefully, you have the history I submitted of 1820 Gerard Avenue South, which was written by a local historian, and yes, the property was built as a duplex in 1919, and one of the early residents was Cora Goodrich, the daughter-in-law of early Minneapolis pioneer Dr. Calvin Goodrich. And Dr. Goodrich owned the land parcel known as Lowry Hill, and he was the father-in-law of Thomas Lowry himself. Two doors down to the south is 1904 Gerard. It's the original farmhouse from when Lowry Hill was developed, and it's still surrounded by a beautiful canopy of oak trees that are 100 years old. And this section's very popular with pedestrians, I believe, because of the historic nature of the properties. I have three specific comments about the land use application. First, could you please turn to the zoning map, which is attachment number two of the city's analysis? The map is centered on 1820 Gerard Avenue South, and it shows about 60 properties that surround the applicant's property. All of the properties that are shown are R1 or R2, and all of them are single-family, duplex, or triplex. But the city in its analysis on page three, point number three concludes, quote, "Rezoning the property to the R3 district to allow a four-unit structure would be consistent with the surrounding zoning classifications, which range from R1 to R4 and with the land use guidance of the Comprehensive Plan," end quote. I think it's wrong to conclude that the R3 would be consistent with the R1 and R2 zoning of the 60-plus neighbors on the map. And I also think it's wrong to conclude that inserting an R3 into this area of R1 and R2 homes is consistent with the 2040 plan. Point number two, we mentioned parking earlier. Parking on Lincoln near its intersection with Gerard is a major concern. The application notes a four-stall garage, but it is, in fact, a tandem garage with two spaces behind two spaces, which is not practical for three or four different households. Previous tenants of this property mainly park on Lincoln, which is a narrow street and is difficult to navigate with snow buildup in the winter. And parking has been a concern for the residents in the R2 zoning situation, and it would become increasingly problematic in an R3 situation with four units, or more so with more than four units, which would be permitted with this proposed R3 zoning. My third point is that the 2040 Comprehensive Plan includes multiple detailed efforts not to disrupt existing neighborhoods, which is one reason why the plan directs specific attention to low-density areas. And there's no question that we are in a low-density area and that this zoning change has the potential to significantly disrupt the neighborhood. You have received a number of submissions from some of the neighbors. Please read the letter of Susan Lenfeste. She's lived across this street for almost 40 years, and she summarizes the concerns of the neighbors, that rezoning of this older property to potentially permit up to nine units would forever change the historic character of this neighborhood. Dr. Appleman is a landlord with other properties in Minneapolis, and he does not intend to live at this property. The goal of 1820 Gerard Avenue LLC, which is the named owner of this property, I imagine, as true with any investment entity, is profit and not the interest of the city or the neighborhood. I do appreciate Dr. Appleman reiterating their intention to only place a fourth unit, and we're grateful for that, but it's impossible to know the owner's future plans, if they will change or if a new owner will have different plans as permitted under R3. So in summary, the neighbors urge the Planning Commission and the City Council and any other department with input into this application to deny rezoning of this property. If you can come up with a solution that would permit four units but not change the R2 zoning of the property, such a solution would be consistent with the 2040 plan, and it would help to preserve one of the few remaining historic neighborhoods in the city. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the line wishing to speak to this item? I don't see anybody else on the list. So if there's anybody else on the line wishing to speak to this item, please press star six and make yourself known. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing on item number six. Commissioners, we have a rezoning for us. Is there any discussion? Or would somebody like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Marwa?
Hi, I make a motion for the rezoning to be approved.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Marwa, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Lepke Pier?
Yes, I will actually be voting against this motion. I actually, and all the correspondents had already highlighted the letter sent from Ms. Rosenstein that cited, I thought, very convincing arguments related to why we couldn't approve the rezoning. I understand we're a very density-friendly commission, but it does seem as though, looking at the map, this would be kind of an outlier to approve the R3 zoning. And although I think one unit isn't problematic, and the neighbors concur with that sentiment, it's not possible to get the one unit without allowing for the future possibility for, what, nine units? And as former Commissioner Ted Tucker used to say, rezoning is forever. So I just, I guess, as much as I personally don't have a problem with the fourth unit, I do think that all of the reasons outlined in that correspondence very firmly show that there isn't a legal standing for approving the rezoning to R3. So I will be voting in opposition to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lepke Pier. Are there any other comments? Very good. You know, I'll just say that, you know, one of the goals of the Comprehensive Plan was to increase, be able to increase density while maintaining that kind of physical characteristics of our neighborhoods, and this item, to me, I think, does do that. I know that there are apartment buildings right around here. I actually grew up at 1901 Knox, and know that there are a number of apartments on Humboldt and certainly along the Franklin Corridor and so forth. And so it's not out of character for the area to have multi-unit condos, multi-unit apartment buildings, certainly if you look within a two-block radius or so. And this looks like a beautiful building and a large lot, and I think that allowing such a reuse to occur is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Seeing no other comments, clerk, please call the call.
Dunick? Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Lepke Pier?
No.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
That's six to one.
That motion carries, and that concludes our business with item number six. Next up is item number 12, which is HC2 3501 to 3525 Hennepin Avenue in Ward 10. Staff is Aaron.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. So for this item, 3501 to 3525 Hennepin Avenue, the project site is six parcels at that southeast corner of 35th and Hennepin. It's a unique property, contains and would retain a charming 1923 Twin Cities Granite Works building. It's a reverse-corner lot with a front yard property line along Hennepin and 35th Street West, and it also has a dead-end alley that creates unique property lines at the back of the lot. There are a mix of buildings and zoning in the area. To the east, there is a lot of low-density residential. Along Hennepin Avenue, a mix of commercial, like the Uptown Vision Clinic to the south, mixed-use buildings, like the new Hummingbird Building just across the street to the north, and a wide range of residential, this being along Hennepin, with from 2 to 70 units, including the Greenhouse Apartments at 3540 Hennepin Avenue. Slide two, please. The grading of the site, it slopes down to the east and to the south, and at some points, a pretty significant grade. Slide three, please. Mixed-use development is the proposal that would retain, as I mentioned before, that 1923 Twin Cities Granite Works building at the corner. It would add 1,400 square feet of commercial and 74 residential units. The design, you could say it's an E-shaped design, building, two courtyards along Hennepin, multiple stepbacks of the upper floors, and a number of different places are those stepbacks along 35th and Hennepin, and at the back of the building as well. Materials: brick, metal panel, and fiber cement. And it would have enclosed parking that would be accessed from the public alley. Now, recognize that there are a lot of applications for this project, but given the unique property, sensitive design to the area, and the Minneapolis 2040 Guidance wanting often more than what you see along this corridor, at this time, CPED, you know, comparing this to what's there now at this time, but CPED is supportive of the applications, except the variance to reduce the front yard setback of the transformer along Hennepin Avenue. And the applicant is supportive of the staff recommendation and the conditions of approval. I do want to note there's the addendum memo that calls out that staff made an error in the height analysis. This is application E. It should be as the applicant proposed and has been shown in the plans since December 2019, and that being to increase the height from four stories, 56 feet, to 56, to five stories, 59 feet, instead of what's noted in the report, 56 feet. Staff is looking, staff is recommending approval of this application, and with an additional condition of approval, that being that the design not change to what you see currently. So positives in support of the project. If you could go to the next slide, please. You'd be looking to remove the surface parking lot, which is a fair amount of the site currently, two curb cuts along Hennepin Avenue, a goods and services corridor, and a high-frequency transit network. It would also support the pedestrian improvement, the pedestrian environment in the area with the nice courtyards and multiple entrances that access Hennepin Avenue. It would improve the stormwater runoff situation. Currently, with the large surface parking lots at the back, likely, a lot of water goes to the neighboring properties to the east. With this proposal, you would have more onsite capturing of stormwater or slowing down the stormwater and getting more stormwater to Hennepin Avenue instead of to the residential properties to the east. Also note, with inclusionary zoning, it would provide six affordable units. It does what the comp plan is looking for in having a mixed-use building along a goods and services corridor. It encloses parking, and staff really feels like it's a well-designed building that blends with the area, going from commercial to the north, to the residential to the south, and the stepbacks, the multiple stepbacks for the building, both from Hennepin Avenue and to the east. And if you go to the next slide, please, or if you could transition to the next slide, also respecting the built environment along 35th Street with that lower, that smaller building along that, the smaller building portion along 35th. So, and also note, just a lot more glass on the upper floor to help increase the transparency. The next slide, please. And in spending more and more time looking at this diagram, it just shows the applicant's thoughtfulness in placing different parts of the building in different areas to reduce the impact and also to blend in with the area. Next slide, please. And also with the shadow study, not seeing, I mean, except for those winter days, which is typical, especially if you have a new development in this area, the shadowing impacts would not be that great. Next slide, please. So a fair amount of comments have come in, both in the staff report and then in the addendum packet, concerns of height, traffic, and parking, but also two letters of support in the addendum packet. I also note I've been working with others in real time, those that might have tried to sign in and did not know that they were to have to call in after 3:30, and just trying to see if we can work on getting them to be able to speak. But that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Very good. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I've asked the applicant to unmute yourself by hitting star six and introduce yourself and add any further context you wish.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Bob Locan from ESG Architects, and I think Aaron's summary of the project is very thorough and complete. I don't have much to add. I will note that for the Commissioners here, the design that we're presenting tonight remains quite consistent with the design that we presented to Committee of the Whole on December 12th. I recognize there are some new Commissioners now on the commission that weren't present for that Committee of the Whole meeting, but the primary, actually very few changes since we presented. One of the, I think, changes to note is that- very few changes since we presented. One of the, I think, changes to note is that based on feedback from the Public Works Department and our general contractor, we, we did increase the setback of the below-grade parking from the alley in order to facilitate keeping that alley open during construction. And, and we did, since we met with Committee of the Whole, we have met with the neighborhood a couple times. It's been a very robust discussion. Most of the discussion is primarily about height and massing. And some of the sort of criticism that we've received is primarily due, not necessarily to the, to the density of the building. I think the neighborhood is supportive of density historically. But the primary discussion points have been the design teams and the development teams' decision and to, to how the building is massed and primarily that the, the five-story portion of the building is located on the east where it is closer to the single-family residential properties. And I will say that we've been, we recognize, you know, the, the adjustment that this will be, should this be developed from what's existing. And we've been, we've taken great care to create the exhibits that really quite clearly show the height and massing so that both the public and the Commissioners can, can understand the proposal. And, and primarily, I'll just describe our, our motivation for the design that we've done. I think Aaron noted properly that part of the reason for the massing is a desire to enrich the pedestrian streetscape along Hennepin Avenue, which is really the primary corridor and the primary public place from which most of the public will interact with the building. And as Aaron noted, there's a desire to create these courtyards with individual entrances in order to engage and interact with that public realm. The other discussion point, and Aaron actually talked about this quite well, so I won't spend much time on this, but it's also about stormwater management, which is related to the application to increase the allowable impervious area. It's true that we are requesting an application to slightly increase the, the allowable impervious. But I will note that the proposed design represents a significant improvement from the existing condition. So not, and Aaron did mention the, the, the large surface parking lots, which obviously surface drain to the street before going to the storm system, picking up sediment and contaminants along the way. But also of the existing buildings, the majority of them do not drain internally, and most of them also drain via scuppers and rainwater leaders to the surface parking. So the vast majority of that site, whether it's building roofs or, or surface parking, drains via the surface, primarily out through the alley. And so our building, in addition to creating slightly more pervious area, will control the stormwater much more directly. And then I will also note that the green roof areas that we're showing within those courtyards do not technically count toward as pervious. So we have to count those as impervious. So would those be count, if, if those were counted as pervious, the, the numbers would be a lot better. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is something that isn't directly addressed in the staff report, but has been a subject of discussion with a couple of the neighbors who use the alley, the dead-end alley for access. And at this point, I'd request staff to display the exhibit that I uploaded when I signed up. It's just a one-page exhibit. And I am watching online, but I know that there's a delay. So if someone could tell me when that exhibit is on the screen, I can speak Maybe I'll, I'll set it up if, if, while we wait for that exhibit. So the, the alley is a dead-end alley. Currently, because of the surface parking lots and the multiple curb cuts onto Hennepin, it's used informally as a through alley. Okay, I do, I don't quite see it yet, but. And so the, there is a property that, that addresses Gerard that, that uses the alley for access. And through designing the project, we were made aware that the, that that property currently has only informal access to the alley. And so we worked with that neighboring property owner. And while they're not enthusiastic about the event or about the, about the development as a whole, we were able to work cooperatively to sort of devise two options that would give them formal legal access to this dead-end alley with, once our development is complete. And part of that would, would require our, this, the developer to grant an easement across their property to allow access. So we have been working through that. We presented two options to them. They've indicated that they would prefer one of those options. The option, our application was submitted to include the option that includes the greater area of impervious. So should they choose, and I believe they are leaning that way, the option that has less pavement, it would also help improve and increase the pervious coverage. And I think that's all I will present. And I will also note that the applicant is also here tonight to answer questions that the Commissioners might have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions for Joe Loken or any of the others on the applicant team? All right. Seeing none, we can-
I, I have a question.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Caprini.
I'm sorry. Did he say that there were six affordable units?
I will let Joe Loken answer that.
Commissioners, yes. With the 74 proposed units, the six affordable units are, will be a requirement as part of the inclusionary zoning.
Oh, oh.
Is that enough? I mean, six out of 74, I mean, and he did state that there are new Commissioners. And I believe, I understand that this was presented, I believe he said, in December. So I just think six out of 74, that's very few. But if that's, if that's okay with the 2040 plan, I just wanted to ask the question. It's, it's kind of stunning to me, I guess. Well, that's it. I just wanted to make that comment.
Aaron, could you give us a, just a little overview of kind of where the affordable requirements come from and kind of how that works?
I may ask Kimberly to chime in here of, of just looking to, the, with the inclusionary zoning requirements being 8% of the overall units when, for, in this case, having a building that has more than 50 units, that's, those are the triggers. And I just noted, I just noted that. I also note that the applicant, and for, for what it's worth, there was discussions in late 2019 of having this project go forward on a, on a quicker timeframe. But, but the applicant wanted to pull back and have more discussions with the neighborhood and comply with the city requirements that would be in place in 2020. And Kimberly, if there's other things that you think would be helpful to add about the affordable housing, I would welcome that.
So Aaron, just to clarify then, so the, the inclusionary zoning, which is a requirement that there be affordable housing, kicked in in 2020. And then, you know, my understanding, the Commission obviously reviewed this, is that the, the require, the percent required is, is kind of a gradually increasing percent over a period of time. So right now, the requirement is 8%. But ultimately, the city will have a higher requirement as the timeline and sort of various triggers move the process forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smiley?
Hi, I just have a clarifying question. Since for myself, the six affordable housing units are affordable in nature, right? Like the, the rent will be affordable, but then potentially more families could live in those, holding, say, a voucher. Is that correct?
I have to admit to not completely knowing the, you know, all the requirements with the affordable housing requirements. But those will be part of the requirement that, and, and recognized through city requirements that they, that the affordable housing be maintained.
Aaron, if I could, this is Bob Loken.
Go ahead.
My understanding, I'm, I'm getting up to speed with the new inclusionary policy as well. But I believe that the affordable units are required to be rented at 60% or, or less of AMI and that they have a term of at least 20 years. So those, those units would be required to be affordable for a term of 20 years. And I will also note that the, the strict requirement for this property is not six units because the number of units phases in, based on the number of, of dwelling units for this project, the required number of affordable units is actually 4.72, not six.
Very good. And I believe that the, the units must be reflective of the unit mix in the rest of the building. Kimberly, you have some additional clarification?
Correct. Yes, I was just gonna say, the Unified Housing Policy has a lot of information in it. It's very detailed and very complex when it comes to interpreting the onsite production requirement. So it sounds like the applicant here is pursuing the onsite production. There is a requirement in terms of the finishes in the unit as well, that the affordable units match the quality of finishes in the remainder of the units in the building, and that the unit mix for the affordable units matches the unit mix. So in other words, if you have a building with one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom units, you couldn't make all of your affordable units one bedrooms. It would need to basically have a diversified set of affordable units that matches that in the overall number of units in the building. And basically, we have a condition of approval that requires the applicant to comply with Unified Housing Policy. So all of this is verified and worked out in cooperation with CPED planning staff and CPED housing staff before building permits and certificates of occupancy are issued.
Thank you, Kimberly. Are there any further questions of the applicant? All right. Seeing none, we'll work through the rest of our list of testifiers here. A few of these may be members of the applicant team. But I will list everybody off. And if you wish to speak, please, star six and unmute. Bruce Cochran. Tony Kriha, I know, is part of the applicant team. Star six to unmute.
It's Julie Mitchner, resident at Gerard. Mitchner.
Mitchner, very good. Please state your name and address for the record and, and-
I would think what I would like to do is, is defer to Bruce Cochran first. So Bruce, if you're on the line, could you star six yourself? I think as someone who's most, who is most impacted by this project, I'd really like to get the, the commit, the committee to hear from you first. So Bruce, if you're there.
We'll allow that. Bruce Cochran, if you are, you're apparently not a member of the applicant team. If you are on the line, you are the top of the list here. Please press star six to unmute yourself. I have a record of you being on the line here.
Hi, can you hear me? This is his wife, Jennifer Foss. He's having trouble with his phone. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm gonna hand, I'm gonna hand him my phone.
All right. Mr. Cochran, please, state your name and address for the record.
Do I have two minutes or do I have longer?
You can take a little bit longer, but please be aware there, there's a list of speakers here.
Okay. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Bruce Cochran. I live at 3520 Gerard Avenue South. I would like for the Commission to deny the variances in rezoning of this building project because it doesn't adequately adhere to the Minneapolis 2040 Plan goals. First off, with safety, the Minneapolis 2040 Plan, Policy 26, Vision Zero, eliminate fatalities and severe injuries that are a result of crashes on city streets by 2027. So first bullet point, as designed, all automobile access for the building's parking garage will take place from the alley off 35th Street, causing safety concerns for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. Bullet point item number two, this block of 35th Street is a one-way with a steep hill. In our 18 years entering our garage through this access, a turn from 35th Street heading east into the alley is a dangerous turn, especially in the winter because of the ice and snow. Many people have slid into the existing wall making that turn. The proposal calls for a much smaller curb cut than the existing one. Add that to 92 additional vehicles making that turn, and we have grave concerns about the safety of people in vehicles being rear-ended as well as pedestrians and bicyclists being hit. Bullet item number three under safety, we are also concerned about the increased traffic on Gerard and adjacent streets. During the Hennepin Avenue road construction, many vehicles sped down Gerard with a much higher than average percentage of vehicles driving the wrong way up the hill against the one-way on 35th Street. Should the proposed project be approved, I strongly encourage a traffic survey be conducted to provide for the greatest amount of safety for all pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. Now, my wife will speak after me.
Hi, does that work okay for me to speak next?
That does. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Foss. I live at 3520 Gerard Avenue South. Our family has lived in this home for 18 years. And overall, we're very supportive of density. I also want to just take a moment to thank the developers who are working very kindly with us to resolve issues on access to our garage. But overall, I wanted to just address a few of the issues we have in particular that don't seem to work with our neighborhood. The city requires for the approval, approval of variances, that the proposed variance not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. The requested setback variances in the conditionally used permit to exceed allowed height from four stories to five stories would create a building a mass and bulk at the top of a steep grade that will tower over the neighborhood, especially the single-family homes directly behind the building. This will significantly impact the enjoyment of these properties, resulting in a lack of solar access and privacy for the residents on Gerard Avenue, 35th Street, and Hennepin Court just to the south of the project. Policies five and six of the Minneapolis 2040 Comprehensive Plan address encouragement of building mass and placement that enables solar access and considers the impact of shadowing. And we have concerns that the, this project as designed will have significant impact. The 2040 Plan also calls for bulk along commercial corridors and then transitions into lower-density areas, and this project is actually designed the opposite way. Finally, we respectfully request that before you make this generational planning decision, you visit the affected properties in person to fully appreciate the impact of a building of this size on a steep grade. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, do we have, is Ryan Sather part of the development team? Or are you trying to unmute yourself? to unmute yourself?
This is Ryan Sather. I represent one of the the property owners. Yes, yes, sir. On the development team.
All right, I'm gonna assume that that you, Ryan, and Tony are not intending to speak. Commissioner Smiley has a question for staff.
Hi, sorry, took me a little bit to unmute myself. As was mentioned, that this has, this project came to committee of the whole in December, and me being one of the newer commissioners, I wasn't part of that discussion. I would have brought up this question then. I lived just three blocks from here for over five years, so I'm very familiar with this property, and I totally understand the sliding and cars going the wrong direction. I've seen it myself several times. So I guess my question is that are there, and I know that Hennepin Avenue is not, I believe is a county road, and so therefore, Minneapolis Public Works may not have the same amount of discretion in doing some work, but I'm kind of like wondering if there are ways to like put a pedestrian cross, crossing signal there that can be activated and or better signage in that area somehow cars keep missing it and or any anything that can help with, because this, the 35th Street is very steep in that one, one block between Hennepin and Gerard. So it does make it quite a bit of a hike, to be honest, but but in the winter, it does make it very slippery. So I don't know what, what the public works can do in in a situation like this, what tools they have available in order to address those, especially considering how many, how much foot traffic will increase in this one corner because of the new 74, like 74 new units, but also wondering if, I'm sorry, but also wondering if the, there's enough parking in this building for the residents, but also their guests potentially to not take away from residential parking because it's such a dense few blocks over there.
Commissioner, we can definitely take these thoughts, and I have these notes written down to look at and discuss that with Public Works. And if there are issues that come up, then, then I can, I will look into that with my colleagues in Public Works.
Aaron, if you can clarify, there is an additional kind of process that happens with Public Works, correct, in terms of approvals? You are muted.
And my apologies, and I don't know if I was muted with with my answer.
No, no, we heard you before.
Okay. And could you repeat your question? Sure.
Yeah, could you just, so there is an additional kind of set of approvals from Public Works, correct, where where these kinds of issues would be handled?
Right. And they are well aware, given the Hennepin Avenue reconstruction of this area, and also, you know, having concerns or looking at the situation of having that dead-end alley, something that's not ideal, but something that we just are forced to live with with this project, given the current property lines. So there will be that additional process for vehicle access and maneuvering. And obviously, the city's goals are to reduce conflict points and improve the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists in the area.
Very good. Thank you. Moving through our public hearing list here, is there John Olson on the line? John Olson, if you wish to testify, please hit star.
Excuse, oh, okay.
It's John Olson. If this is John Olson, please identify yourself and state your name and address for the record.
This is John D. Olson. I live at 3520 Gerard Avenue South, one block directly east of the proposed building, and I've been living here for about 35 years. I oppose the variances requested for this apartment building. This building is out of character with the neighborhood, the surrounding properties, and the nearby plan. So imagine driving south from downtown along Hennepin Avenue towards the beautiful gems of, within the cost of, first you are in beautiful parks and churches, then there's increasingly commercial stretches, buildings, shops, and restaurants, peeking at the Calhoun Square. Finally, there is a transition of homes, small businesses, and an historic fire station before seeing the silvian landscape and gates of Lakewood Cemetery with the lakes to the right. This proposed building would be a jarring interruption of that pattern. Instead of the existing older structures of one to three stories, this would be a modern five-story building just a half block from the cemetery. Our city and state founders, including Charles Loring, father of Minneapolis' parks, would be rolling in their nearby graves. You likely have seen the TPT program Parks for People, which documents the innovative designing and layout of the city with park landscapes and beautiful boulevards. These designs have brought equal to life and international acclaim. Zoning and building requirements have supported that design of beautiful environments. By allowing variances, you nullify these designs and set precedence for even taller and more intrusive buildings. You have may also seen the TPT Lost Twin Cities series, which highlights the loss of our historic and natural heritage. Don't let this project be the continuation of that decline. The building will increase impervious space, increase runoff, and reduce affordable housing in small businesses. The runoff from this area tends to dry down the hill during heavy rains. The entrance is under the building, will be tough. It will be through an alley off 35th Street, a narrow, steep road. It becomes icy in the winter, and is difficult to navigate to turn into that alley, a safety concern. The exiting traffic will funnel into narrow residential streets. From the east where I live, this building will present itself as a six-story tall monolith on a grade that is already a story and a half above Gerard. So it'll be the equivalent of seeing a seven or eight-story building. It certainly will block late afternoon and evening sunlight and affect quality of life. I attended a neighborhood presentation on the proposal on June, January 15th at Bryant Park. There were many suggestions presented to the participants, by the participants, but there is no evidence that any of the suggestions resulted in changes in the proposal. Please consider public input and do not approve this proposed building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Michener, sorry.
Yes, yes, I'm here. So I am also.
Please, please state your name and address for the record, and you sound fairly echoey. Hello? All right, we've got something coming up on the screen. Commissioner, are you on the line?
Press star six to unmute.
We just had you, but we do not have you right now, Julie Michener. Star six to unmute.
Okay, better?
Better.
Okay, sorry about that. This is Julie Michener.
Please state your name and address for the record.
You bet. It's Julie Michener. I'm at 3529 Gerard Avenue South in Minneapolis. And my, I did send in a PDF with some with some slides. I can't see it because my web.
It is on the screen.
My web is is down, at least in terms of my feed from from the city. So I'm just gonna go ahead and and you guys can take a look at SO My Visuals, which I hope will help kind of give you a sense of of what the impact that this project would have on our neighborhood. I oppose it because the variances in conditional use permits are to me seem inconsistent with goals the leaders of the city of Minneapolis have outlined in their Minneapolis 2040 Plan, specifically goal number six regarding high-quality physical environments, and number nine, which outlines complete neighborhoods. These goals and the action steps outlined state that the city will promote design for built environments that contribute to a sense of place and community, as well as prioritize pedestrian-oriented land use, building design, and site design. Motor vehicle use comes last in their hierarchy. And these proposed variances will alter the essential character of this neighborhood, be injurious to the use and enjoyment of residents, and be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of residents who live here and nearby. I would also point you to the South Uptown Neighborhood Association that came out with a resolution from all the neighbors in opposition to this project that also lists some very good points. I also want to point to goal number nine, complete neighborhoods that specifically advocates reducing greenhouse gas emissions and promoting walking, biking, and transit. This project, as proposed, features 92 parking spaces for 74 apartments that will have one entrance accessible off a narrow alley onto a one-way street heading eastbound, deeper into the neighborhood. Undoubtedly, when multiple cars are entering and exiting the single-lane entrance, cars will have to stop, idle, traffic will back up onto Hennepin, traffic congestion will increase and create a hazard for pedestrians and bikers, not to mention the increase in carbon dioxide. Winter driving conditions only exacerbate that problem. Another action steps in Minneapolis 2040 also outline encouraging building placement where possible, enable solar access, and allows light and air into the site surrounding properties. In addition to encouraging building placement and massing design that considers the impact of shadowing, and that's a direct quote from the Minneapolis 2040 Plan, granting the conditional use permit will place the bulk of this building nearly six stories tall due to the steep grade facing residential backyards. The building will loom over residents and reduce light and air. And somebody else made a comment about buildings being an outlier in their neighborhoods. This is definitely in that category. Like I, like John and others has has said, that we had a community meeting, we offered a lot of suggestions, we asked a lot of questions. As far as any of us can tell, they were, neighbors were completely ignored in this process. And and I, for me, it's, 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 I would really implore the commission to really come see in our neighborhood, see where the property lines are, take a really hard look at what this building would do to that to that site before you make, before you you vote on this on this proposal. And as with that, I will thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We next have Jordan Lamont, if you are on the line. Please press star six and unmute yourself. Is there a Jordan Lamont on the line? All right, hearing nobody. Max Ellis, is there a Max Ellis on the line? Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Am I still on the line?
Yes, if you hit star six, you will.
Okay.
Mute yourself.
Max Ellis was actually told he could not, he could not participate because he didn't call in in front in time for the deadline. And I know that there have been cellphone cellphone coverage issues in South Minneapolis this afternoon. So I am really hoping that people will be able to speak even with that problem.
Thank you. Yes, I know that there were issues getting folks on, and that staff's working to get them a number.
Awesome.
Call in.
Thank you so much.
Max Ellis, if you're on the line, please hit star six. Reports are, you are on the line somewhere. Hello? All right, we'll circle back to Max, unless you can get on here. Is there an Erin Rubenstein on the line? Star six to unmute, please.
Hello, my name is Erin Rubenstein. I live at 3249 Emerson Avenue South. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much.
Sure. So I live a few blocks away from the project site, and I'd just like to speak in support of what the neighbors have said. Also, I'm a member, a longtime member of the neighborhood's land use and transportation committee, and I hope Max Ellis can get, is able to connect. Max is a woman, and she's the chair of the South Uptown Neighborhood Association, and she was going to speak to present our official neighborhood position. And if she's not able to, I guess I would like to just say a few words about the neighborhood's, you know, official position. I believe you have her resolution in front of you. Is that correct?
Yes, the resolution is in our materials.
Very good. I would like to just speak for myself, then. My primary concern is about the site planning and the massing of this project. Landor Group, the developer, does a fantastic job of designing really good projects around our community. There are a number of examples of their projects that I think really contribute to our community. But I think this is not one of them. And I believe it all stems from their desire to keep that one-story commercial building right at the corner at 3501 Hennepin. It clearly shows in the application that they want to keep that building and redistribute the massing. And there's a lovely, you know, it's an east-shaped building with lovely courtyards facing Hennepin and step backs with three-story, four-story, and five-story buildings. So the, the building design from Hennepin is, is lovely and would really contribute to the community. But as a number of people, I think all of the people have said who have spoken so far, from the backside, it's, it's a big, solid, half-block-long wall that is actually six stories tall, if I measured it correctly. It's 64 feet tall at the highest point because of the, you know, various changing grade along that east elevation. So it's nearly, you know, it's if, I believe if it were, one even, if the building were even one inch taller, it would be considered a seven-story building. If it were this height all the way around, of course, because of the grade change, it's, it's considered a five-story building rather than a six-story building. But along this elevation, it is six stories because of the parking garage. And as people have noted, there is a significant grade change, so that the single-family houses behind it are even lower in elevation. You're gonna have this huge wall looming above them. And I think it's just completely unnecessary. The neighborhood is not, and I'm not opposed to the density, but the, the developer's objective of keeping that one-story building results in redistribution of of the building massing and then that height to the back of the site, site instead of along Hennepin, where I think it more appropriately belongs. And my field is, I'm a historic preservation consultant, so I am all in favor of keeping historic buildings. But if this whole site is going to be, be redeveloped, my opinion is that that existing one-story building is a nice background building. It's certainly a nice building, but for the community, it's, the trade-off is not a good one. It's, this building is not so important to keep. I would rather see that building demolished and have a building that is lower in height, that more appropriately fits the character of the neighborhood, and particularly the the site, given the grade changes. I believe at the beginning of the, this part of the meeting, Mr. Henauer mentioned something about sensitive design to the area. And I would, I would really disagree about that. And as others have said, developers simply disregarded everything, well, most, many things that the community offered in terms of input. And and so I would suggest that although there are some very nicely designed aspects of this project, and it may be in some ways better than what's there now, I think it's not good enough. It's not, it doesn't meet really fundamental community and city goals about compatibility. I think it, there's an opportunity for for a better design project that is compatible with the neighborhood, that can show how to integrate new development in an older, less dense neighborhood. And the opportunity is just missed here. And I hope the planning commission will reject this. And I hope the Planning Commission will reject this proposal. And I would agree that it would be injurious to the enjoyment of property and welfare of residents and contrary to the character of the area. And I guess I won't say anything about the CREG resolution. You have that there, and I hope Max Ellis can speak to it in more detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Max Ellis or Jordan Lamont, if either of you are on, please hit star six and state your name and address for the record. Yes.
This is Max Ellis.
Oh, yeah. Please state your name and address for the record.
Max Ellis, three-four-one-five Emerson Avenue South, Minneapolis, five-five-four-zero-eight.
All right, go ahead.
I support everything that my fellow neighbors have said, so I will keep it very short and direct. And we did submit, as a neighborhood, a letter to the commission. And I just want to reiterate, we support density in our neighborhood. But with that, the proposed project requires the following to be approved. A variance to the side and rear setbacks, a conditional use to exceed allowing heights from four stories to five, which actually equate to six, as the fault of the property. A variance to the lot coverage and allowing, we allow from R two and C one to C three A and O R two. Also, a variance to, and also the site plan. There's been many concerns for safety, which is very obvious. And also, you have the community and the neighborhood, we have the concern for the monolithic intrusive wall that will also impede into our neighborhoods that we have concerned for. We have expressed this continuously. We have met, and that part seems to not be heard. The conditional use to let for height of uptown, of it, place the tallest parts of the structure towards the back of the lot rather than along Hennepin, which would be more appropriate for it to be. Hennepin Avenue has a sixty-six-foot right-of-way compared to only twelve foot in the alley. Traditionally, the pronouncing of that site, which I invite all of the commission to come and view, and it appears that some of you are very aware of that fault, as it also concerns for safety. The elevation would be in a six-foot building, and as proposed, the total height and bulk of the building would be placed on the back along the light and air of our neighbors. We support density and growth, but we also do not want to be intruded as a neighborhood for that is safe and allowed for us to enjoy.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on the line hoping to speak on item number twelve? If there is, please hit star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Joel Checik with the Hennepin Court.
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Great.
Hi, this is Jane Burke.
All right, Jane Burke, we'll put you on the list here. Joel, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Joel Checik, thirty-five twenty-nine Hennepin Avenue in Hennepin Court, and president of the Hennepin Court Owners Association. So we're the six family units just south of the proposed lot. And I know it's getting late, and there've been a lot of really good, solid commentary thus far. We sent a letter and just wanted to reiterate the points that Mr. Hanauer and Ms. Bender received from our association about a week or so ago, significantly really identifying the mass of the unit. In fact, as one of the previous presenters suggested, that it's in less than two inches, really, from being almost a seven-story project. Well, our neighbors to the east on Gerard really will bear the brunt of that. The mass of the unit also will shadow Hennepin Court. We're just south of the entire structure, and so we deal with it as well. And as Julie Mitchner brought up, the importance of the 2040 Plan and the willingness to have light and sun kind of on every property is sort of flawed with the design of this in its current fashion. Also, from the standpoint from Hennepin Court, so again, being directly to the south of proposed property, we absolutely would recommend the motion to deny the variance to reduce the southern interior side yard setback from five feet to zero feet. So that would bring the transformer and mechanics for the proposed property to within zero feet of the property line, which would suggest it will butt up against the immediate two families at thirty-five twenty-nine and thirty-five thirty-one, and again, just be closer to the shadowing of our courtyard. We have a pretty little treed area that will probably not see the sun with the structure being up there. So again, to let others speak, we did want to reiterate the direct impact that six additional families feel to the south. And while the design is innovative, and we believe in the density, and we believe in the density along Hennepin Avenue, and we believe in the fact that this group is trying to propose a design that will better the area as a whole in its current design, it doesn't do that, and it really offends and affects many families throughout this neighborhood. So thank you for hearing us.
Thank you very much. Jane Burke, if you could hit star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Jane Burke. I am a business owner at the thirty-five fifteen Hennepin Building. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I did attend the December Committee of the Hall meeting, and then also the meeting in January, and a few other meetings since then regarding this project. And most of what I have to say has been already voiced by many of the neighbors from the neighborhood. And I would just add that I want to go back to the, and someone, one of the commissioners at the beginning of the call brought up the affordable housing issue, and I just want to state that the thirty-five thirteen, thirty-five fifteen building, the two-story building that's there, houses five affordable housing apartments currently, as well as five affordable business spaces. And that are occupied all by independent sole provider business owners, every single one of those spaces. I don't think that any of us could afford to find a place that is comparable to what we have now in another location, either in South Uptown or somewhere in Minneapolis. There really isn't anything comparable, and I have done an incredible amount of looking around. I and three other of the business owners in that building sent a letter to Erin Hanauer and copied Lisa Bender. We stated our concerns in that letter. And a part of it was with, especially, and this was something that was also addressed at the very top of the meeting, especially with all that's happened, with the loss of businesses, and, you know, going back to the issues that created the inequities with the redlining of areas such as all around the lakes and those neighborhoods. To build this kind of a building in the middle of that neighborhood where there is a nice mix of a little more higher-end and a little more affordable, and it's a mix of residential, and it's a mix of rental, and it's a mix of commercial, and it's a nice, quiet area of Uptown. And to put something like this in the middle of that area as opposed to perhaps along the Hennepin corridor where it would blend right in with all the other developments, it seems a little jarring, especially in our current day. And all the issues that the other people brought up, I can confirm, you know, the icy streets, the flooding intersection down at Thirty-Fifth and Gerard, the, you know, how difficult and dangerous it is to negotiate in the wintertime especially, the impact to pedestrians and bike traffic when you are entering and exiting that alleyway, it is very dangerous, and you have to proceed with a great deal of caution. And I'm concerned about the increase of traffic, that that would definitely bring an increase of accidents. And I guess, I don't want to take up any more time because everything else I would say at this point would only reiterate what's already been stated, and I thank you so much for giving me the chance to speak.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the line wishing to speak on thirty-five oh-one Hennepin Avenue? Item number twelve on our agenda. If there is, please hit star six to unmute yourself, make yourself known. All right, hearing, no one. I'm going to close the public hearing. And I know that we have a question for staff commissioner Marwa. Commissioner Marwa, if you are speaking, we cannot hear you.
Hi, sorry, I'm on a loner computer today.
Now we can hear you.
Yes, I had a question for staff about the woman's previous comments around the businesses being displaced. According to the plan, I thought those businesses were being retained in that first-story building. So if you could just clarify so I can understand. Thank you.
Sure. The building is staying. They are adding fourteen hundred square feet of additional floor area. I don't know the details of what the business owner and the property owner have worked out in terms of that business staying while construction or afterwards. If the applicant representative is still online, they might be able to provide more details, but that gets into a private matter beyond the land use applications that are being applied for.
Well, I can ask the applicant to clarify. I believe there's one building on the north end of the site that is being taken down. Is that correct? And then one building is staying?
This is Bob Lookin. Tony, would you like to speak to the plans for the tenancy of the building that we're retaining? I have some knowledge of it, but I think Tony would be a better representative.
Tony, star six unmute, if you're on the line.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Tony Crea with the Lander Group. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think what Jane was referring to is the building at thirty-five thirteen fifteen, the corner building, has currently three tenants in the building, and they are to be retained. That building is to be retained and commercial tenants there. And so we have Minneapolis Beauty Lounge, we have Dubtail renovation, and then Mosquito West Emery is our current tenants at the thirty-five oh-one and thirty-five oh-three Hennepin Building. Ryan Sather with Hagginis Properties, who is also on the call, they are the owners to the interior building that houses the both residential and commercial tenants.
The interior building is staying or coming down? Just to clarify for that commissioner's question.
I was cut off here for quite some time. So the interior building is coming down. It's the corner building thirty-five oh-one that is being retained.
Okay, so there's one building that's being retained and a building that's coming down.
Correct.
Commissioner Marwa, do you have further questions? Are there any other questions of staff or of the applicant? Or would somebody like to start us off with a motion? And I would encourage my commissioners to group some of these motions if possible. Commissioner Smiley?
Sorry, I'm finding the mute button.
Oh, we can hear you.
There we go. I move to approve item fifteen A and C.
Item number twelve, right?
Sorry, twelve. I'm sorry, I'm just having one of those days. Yeah, there we go. I move to approve item twelve A, B, C, D, and E, as well as F, G, H, I, and K, L, M, N, and deny the item J.
Second, Meyer. Commissioner Meyer, we have a second. And then Commissioner Smiley, two clarifications.
Right.
On item letter E, there is a staff error, standing fifty-six feet, and in fact, it is fifty-nine feet. Are you accepting the staff error?
Yes. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
And then Erin, was there a suggested additional condition on item N, site plan, to retain the current design? Is that correct?
Chair Rockwell, the only requested addition was for if we could add a second condition of approval for application E and that same design be retained.
On item E, I see.
Okay, so can I just modify my motion?
Smiley, I wouldn't leave that. You may.
So basically, approve all the items under twelve and with the amendment to item E to fifty-nine feet and retain the design as well as denial of item J.
And I assume, but to clarify, all of the motions include the staff recommended conditions of approval.
Yes.
All right. And we have a second by Commissioner Meyer. Is there any discussion? Anybody like to speak to the motion? I'll speak to this for just for a moment. You know, we heard a lot of testimony. And you know, I'm also familiar with the area. I also lived a block from here. We're circling all the places I used to live at 34 34th and Hennepin. So we heard a lot about the the danger of a hill between Hennepin and Gerard. And and know that Public Works has its process for examining and ensuring safety under city standards in those areas. And Erin, I know that Erin was taking notes to bring those comments forward to Public Works. Most of that consideration is not actually within the planning commission's purview. Certainly heard about the the distribution of the mass. And and understand that, you know, I think that one of the things we try to do is is be aware of where that distribution of the mass is and also the situation of the building relative to other buildings. And in looking at the shadow studies, you know, it is in general, the solar access is is there on those other buildings. I recognize that that buildings to the east, there will be some shadowing if they are lower. You know, when I think about this corridor, Hennepin Avenue is is a major spine of the city. There is bus rapid transit coming to this corridor planned and coming to this corridor. It is when we think about complete neighborhoods, the ability to access so many things in this area is extraordinary. It's one of the most walkable neighborhoods in the city. And so I think encouraging and allowing for density to access those amenities, grocery stores, and so on. And the transit access is really important. So this, you know, is is kind of an appropriate reflection, I think, of the goals of the 2040 Plan. And of course, 2040 Plan is dynamic and not every project meets every goal. But our our duty on the commission is to kind of look in aggregate at how and whether a given project meets those goals. And so that is kind of how our process works. With that, seeing no other Commissioners wishing to speak, clerk, please call the mall.
Caprini? Ms. Donick?
Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Lipkipier?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Trader?
Aye.
Seven zero?
Wait, wait, I did not get a chance to vote.
Oh, sorry, I called your name. I didn't know you were there. Go ahead.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it. I apologize. No.
Okay, so that's seven to one.
That motion carries. And that concludes our business with item number 12. Next item on the agenda is item number 15, 3136 Mini Haha Avenue in Borg 9. Staff is Peter Crandall.
Thank you Commissioners. Our next item is at 3136 Mini Haha Avenue South. The site is currently zoned for the R2B district. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing duplex on the site in order to construct a new three-story residential building with 18 dwelling units. This would require a rezoning from the R2B two-family district to the R5 multifamily district, retaining the existing pedestrian-oriented overlay district on the site. The site is located within half a mile of the Lake and Hiawatha LRT light rail station and qualifies for the reduction in required minimum parking. The applicant is also requesting a variance to the minimum interior side yard on the north property line from nine feet to seven feet. We can go to the next slide. This is the survey showing that existing duplex on the site located towards the northeast corner of the property. Next slide. And a rendering of the proposed three-story apartment building. You'll notice from the photographs and renderings that the area has a mix of single and two-family homes as well as smaller scale two to two and a half and three-story apartment buildings. Next slide. The location of the site in relationship to some of the surrounding transit infrastructure. Next slide. And the land use guidance for the site, which is urban neighborhood and corridor four for the built form district. So allowing up to four stories in height for the architectural build form. Next slide, please. Some additional photographic context for the site. Next slide. The site does share residential alley with the properties immediately to the rear. Next slide. And the site plan, the applicant is not proposing to provide any onsite parking. They do not have a minimum vehicle parking requirement for the site. They are proposing some enclosed bicycle parking within the structure as well as visitor bicycle parking in the public right of way and along the south property line. And then there would be two principal entrances to the structure at the rear adjacent to the alley and then along the front property line. Next slide. That's primarily due to the unit layout in that there is no shared internal corridor other than the two principal entryways and stairways on the west and east portions of the structure. And that's driven largely by the width of the lot limiting the ability to provide internal circulation and adequate residential unit width. Next slide. And next slide. The applicant is proposing some landscape enhancements to the site. Next slide. And this shows the shadowing effects on neighboring properties. Again, the property or the proposal is largely in line with a lot of other small-scale multifamily structures in the general area. Next slide. And next slide. The applicant's proposing a brick veneer and then LP smart side wood composite and lap siding and shingle siding. Next slide. The brick is concentrated on the two principal entryways. And the building is essentially a mirror in terms of the design from the east to the west, given the two principal entryways. Next slide. And next slide. So again, the applications before you are the rezoning from R2B to R5 on the corridor four and urban neighborhood combination in terms of land use. Staff is recommending approval to rezone the property to R5. The applicant is seeking a variance on the north interior side yard from nine feet to seven feet. Staff is recommending denial of that application primarily due to the fact that we cannot identify a practical difficulty for that variance while we are able to make the findings for consistency with the spirit and intent of a comprehensive plan and for reasonableness and accommodation of future development. But we are recommending denial of the variance to the interior side yard on the north property line and then the site plan review application to which we have some minor and somewhat standard conditions of approval, including that if the variance to the interior north side yard is ultimately denied, that the applicant could then modify their plans to meet that setback and gain approval of the project moving forward administratively, assuming that there are not other major changes to the project. And I'll conclude there. Continue questions?
Yes, Commissioner Lipkipier.
I mean, I just had a question for staff regarding the percentage of impervious surface coverage for the lot. If you could explain that a little bit?
Sure, the maximum impervious surface coverage in the R5 district is 85%. The applicant is proposing a 65 or a 67% impervious surface coverage on the site.
So for the current zoning, it's assuming that the zoning is approved, the rezoning is approved. But if it doesn't, then it what's the current zoning allow?
R2B is, I believe, 65%. Let me just verify that quick. 60% in R2B.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any other questions of staff? Before we move to the applicant. All right, seeing none, I'll ask the applicant to unmute yourself star six and introduce yourself and any further context if you wish.
Hello, Alex Brogo, Aberdeen Construction. Greetings Planning Commission, staff and attending residents. Love to thank staff and the planning commission for taking time to review my proposal and for the opportunity to speak today in support of the overall project and specifically the two-foot setback variance request. The primary objective of this project is to provide a quality solution to the missing middle housing shortage by providing one and two-bedroom housing options close in proximity to public transit. The Longfellow community has expressed a desire for building types with more traditional character and diversity of apartment unit types during our presentation to the neighborhood council. I have responded by working to develop a unique plan to provide this missing middle product type, which is called for by the 2040 Plan and by the Longfellow neighborhood. As I've studied small apartment building design and budgeting, I've found two things to be true. First, floor area ratio importance on a relatively small three-story walk-up type building is magnified in comparison to much larger buildings. Providing even a slight amount of additional space in this type of building allows for a large step up in interior amenity availability such as bike storage and exterior building character. Secondly, along these same lines with even a slight bit more width, the building can accommodate two-bedroom units that are much more well-suited for a small family, which is currently an underserved 2040 goal. While I understand an argument can be made that the project is proposed on a standard-sized lot, which hypothetically limits the necessity for variances, the desired missing middle project is not a traditional product. Further, it is also not a standard model that is readily available within our community. I would contend that it is better. Both the 2040 Plan and the residents of the Longfellow neighborhood have expressed a shortage of this missing middle housing product. My goal is to provide this unique housing product to the Longfellow neighborhood, which is close in proximity to public transit to fulfill this challenging objective of the 2040 Plan. Through various iterations, I've worked hard to develop the solution in a way that follows the guidance of the 2040 Plan while meeting as many of the existing zoning requirements as possible. In our opinion, the requested two-foot setback variance is the minimum variance required to make this unit mix viable in a narrow building with room enough for small families. It's not easy to achieve, as evidenced by the overall lack of this product within the community. In fact, even the existing properties to the north and south encroach by approximately one foot. The existing structure on this parcel currently encroaches by approximately four feet into the two-story setback guidance. This variance request makes the current situation better than the existing by decreasing the encroachment by two feet and still providing a better option for small families. If the project were a standard 150-unit facility, two feet may not make a very big difference in the end product provided to tenants. But on a small 18-unit project striving to fulfill the missing middle objective, this two feet means the difference between meeting the target and not. I ask the planning commission to please understand this hardship and my efforts to overcome it by helping me make this product type achievable on this lot near public transit by granting the requested two-foot setback variance. Please consider what the city wants long-term, maintaining the status quo on standard lots or achieving the 2040 vision for the betterment of unit mix on standard-sized lots. Thank you again for your time and consideration. I appreciate all you do to make our city better.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll move on in the public hearing. Is there a Joy Martin on the line? If there's a Joy Martin on the line wishing to testify on this item, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Joy Martin. I am the architect for this project at 3136 Mini Haha Avenue South. Would you like my business address?
If you're wishing to testify, no, that's 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 sufficient. I wasn't sure if you were the public or the applicant team here.
Yeah, I'm part of the applicant team.
Do you want to add anything further? All right, very good.
Yes, I'd love to comment as well to follow along with Alex Brogo's statement about our project. I think that what we've found with requesting this two-foot variance is that it really allows us to add architectural interest to the building that, you know, we wouldn't be able to necessarily create otherwise. When you look at the plans and the exterior renderings, you can see that we're able to sort of add a richness of texture with a variety of materials and have the building facade itself enjulate in and out as it goes along the north-south direction. I'm sorry, the north-south facades. And we feel like that that adds a contextual element to the building that if we if we reduce that two feet, then we'll probably, you know, lose some of that ability to create that interest on the facades of the building. We did go back and look at some some ideas and we basically found that the reduction, sorry, some ideas relating to no variance. I mean, we started we started there and evolved the project as we went through the design process, of course. But what we found is that the reduced overall width of the building really squeezes these interior bedroom units so that the best model then becomes more of like higher-end studios or, you know, really sort of tighter one bedrooms. And it makes it almost it makes it extremely challenging to create these at least a few two-bedroom units in this version of the of the design. We did meet with the neighborhood council for Longfellow and took their input very seriously in regards to the materials and sort of, you know, we went with a little bit more of traditional look to the facade so that we would make sure it would blend in with the context and be appropriate. And then additionally, we listened to them regarding landscaping. And having the building shifted to the north slightly allows for us to have a side yard along the south that we can really add a little bit more interest in terms of landscaping. Those are the main items I'd like to address. I think that if anyone has any questions. I, I think that if, um, anyone has any questions, I'm also available to answer them. But, um, yeah, I think that this, this two-foot variance really does help us create a better building for this context and, um, help us achieve the goals of the 2040, uh, plan, which, you know, in this specific location, it's certainly the density is, is, uh, kind of appropriate and, um, the corridor, I think, can support this. So, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you for, uh, letting us present our project.
Very good, thank you so much. Uh, commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anybody else on the line wishing to testify on this project? Thirty-one, thirty-six Mini-Haha. If there are, please press star six to unmute yourself. Seeing no other caller signed up, I'm hearing nobody, um, muting. I will close, uh, public hearing. Commissioners, we have three items before us. Uh, is there any, uh, further discussion, questions of staff, or somebody like to lead off with a motion? Commissioner Donick?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. A question, I think, for staff was brought up about if they're able to fix the, um, the item that, that we recommend that they deny, they can do that administratively, just as a newer person on the commission, can you explain how that works for me?
Sure, so if they were to modify the design of the structure to meet that setback and that change didn't trigger other land use applications or thresholds that would require a public hearing in terms of, um, you know, what they're proposing to change, then that could be approved administratively without returning to the Planning Commission. So it would require really maintaining the building in its current form as far as kind of design language and number of units, um, things like that. But, um, they would pull, you know, the, the building wall back essentially two feet in order to meet that additional setback.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Lipkeep here.
Yeah, a follow-up to Commissioner Donick's question there. So Peter, if that changes the exterior materials to a somewhat severe degree or a unit mix or unit size or unit count, is there a threshold where it would return to Planning Commission as opposed to being approved administratively?
If the material composition were to change such that it required additional alternative compliance under site plan review standards for material stability, or if, you know, the, the design language of the elevations changed dramatically such that it appeared to be a totally different building, um, if the unit count was, um, changed dramatically in either direction in terms of number of units, that would, uh, potentially trigger, uh, return to the commission. But I think the intention would be, and the applicant can maybe speak to this too, but, um, would be to try to move the project forward without those, without that necessity.
I was on mute. Are there any further questions of staff, or would somebody like to start us off with There's three items before us, a rezoning, application for the interior side yards, or, yeah, side yard setback. Commissioner Donick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move that we, that we approve the petition to rezone the property from R2B multifamily to district to the five, or, excuse me, to the R-five multifamily district. I would, uh, also move that we deny the variance to reduce the minimum interior side yard setback along the north interior side yard from nine feet to seven feet. And I would also, uh, move that we approve the site plan review for a three-story residential building with eighteen units, subject to the conditions listed in the item.
Very good, uh, we have motion to approve items A, B, and C, along with the ten stated conditions on item C. Commissioner Smiley?
Um, sorry, did you say approve or deny option B?
Sorry, uh, approve, approve, uh, to go with staff recommendations.
Yes.
Approve items A and C, deny item B.
Thank you, I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Donick?
Aye.
Ms. Smiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
That's eight-zero.
The motion carries and that concludes our official business for the evening. Kimberly, are there any staff updates?
Yes, just a brief update on some appeals that are scheduled to go to the biz committee of the city council tomorrow. Uh, you may recall, it would have been back in May, the Planning Commission heard two, uh, projects right across from each other, five-ten West Lake Street and five-fourteen to five-twenty West Lake Street and associated addresses. Um, each of those projects was approved with a condition of approval that the amount of ground-floor retail be increased, or ground-floor commercial space be increased to fifty percent to achieve the FAR bonus in that category. The applicant is appealing the condition of approval for each one of those projects. Um, we also received an appeal from a neighboring property owner appealing the approval of the projects, including all associated applications. So in total, uh, we have four appeals for those two projects at tomorrow's biz committee meeting. And that is all.
Very good. Uh, Kimberly, could you clarify for the commissioners also just on the, uh, emergency declaration and our, uh, remote hearings and so forth?
Yes, we are planning to continue to have remote public hearings as long as there is a pandemic.
Could be a while. All right, folks. Uh, with that, I will close the hearing, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.